My name is Colin Hastings. I'm the Executive Director of the Pasco Chamber of Commerce, and I want to welcome you to our October General Membership Luncheon. As you can tell, this one's a little bit different, but we'll get into that a little bit later. But first, I'd like to invite you and join me with our Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could please rise. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have a seat. So today's program features a Pasco City Council Candidate Forum. We haven't had the opportunity to do this in a few years because of the pandemic, kind of shut it down, obviously. But the last time we had this was in 2019, and it's a down-and-dirty forum. So you'll be thoroughly entertained, but we'll have also the opportunity to get as many questions in as possible. This wouldn't happen, of course, without our sponsorship for today's luncheon, and that's Columbia Basin Paper and Supply, Reagan and Janice. If you could please stand up and be acknowledged for your support. They're celebrating 76 years in business. They provided today's door prize, too. So if you haven't dropped your business card in at the front desk, you'll want to do that before the end of the program, so we'll be choosing a winner out of there. I do want to take a moment and introduce elected officials that have joined us here today. As you can imagine, there's a few from the City of Pasco Council. So first, we have Irving Brown. Irving, if you can wave, give him a round of applause. Joe Campos, standing right next to him. David Milne, right here in front. Zar Roach, right over here, currently on our council. And Melissa Blaisdell, who just was recently appointed. Melissa, right back there. And then we are expecting a crowd from the Port of Pasco here, but they're having their meetings today. But I know they'll be showing up here in a little bit. But the commissioners that will be in attendance from the Port of Pasco will be Jim Clinworth, Gene Reichman, and Vicki Gordon. And then, last but not least, of course, is Stu Nelson from the Franklin PUD. Normally, at this time, we would go around the room and introduce ourselves, but we really want to provide as much time as possible for our candidates to be able to answer your questions. And so we're getting close to the forum starting, but in the meantime, you'll see some note cards that are on your tables with some pens, too. Please feel free to use that as a way to ask your question. And the question should be pointed out to everyone, so nothing really too specific, but where every candidate can answer said question. So if you can draft it and that sort of capability. Kelly and Megan will collect those from you. When you're ready, just kind of hold it up, and we'll be able to help you out with that and get that up here. And Rebecca Francick will be asking those questions. But before we go into that, I did want to give a couple plugs for our past weekend. If you made it out to Riverfest, you saw that there was a great crowd. The Chamber of Commerce delivered on great weather. And so, thank gosh, that's part of our repertoire to be able to do that because it was our event, and, boy, it couldn't have been a better day. We had thousands of people show up and lots of stories being told as to why the river system is so important to our area. So thank you for all the sponsors and partners with that, too. We don't have enough time to list them all, but there are numerous around support for that and really, really helps drive home the fact how important our hydropower system is. And plenty of steering committee members that put a lot of time and effort into that. So thank you. We're happy that we've moved on now, and that's behind us. And one other event that's coming up, that's a really large event that we encourage great participation in, and that's our Ag Hall of Fame. So if you know somebody who would be an ideal candidate to be a nominee to be the Ag Hall of Fame, you can find that on our website. It doesn't take too long to put it together, but however, we do have a deadline in the first part of November. So if you have someone in mind, please contact us at the Chamber, and we can walk you through that process. So now, it's my pleasure to introduce our moderator today. Our moderator is Rebecca Francick, currently is with Basin Disposal, but many of you probably recognize her as a former city council member as well as Pasco City Council Mayor Pro Tem. So as a reminder, if you have any questions, fill out those note cards. Rebecca will be reading the ground rules for the forum. So but please help me welcome Rebecca, and we'll get started.
Thank you, everyone, for being here today. We sure appreciate your coming. I am going to be giving you the rules for this debate forum, but before I do that, I want to remind you that the ballots are going to be mailed later this week, and then the final vote tally will be November 7. You can watch this forum rebroadcast at Pasco City Television or on Charter Channel 191, that's 191. Please let your friends who aren't able to attend today know that that's an option. Candidates, your assignment. Each of you are going to have a 60-second opening and a 30-second closing statement. Then I will ask each of you a series of questions from the audience, and you will have 45 seconds to respond. Depending on the expediency of the forum, you can expect to answer between three to five questions. The questions are going to be asked in rotating position order. So question one will be answered by position two first. Question two will be answered by position three, and so on. Audience, you have been issued cards on which to ask your questions. Please be considerate of my declining eyesight and write big. Kelly and Megan are going to be circulating around, and they will pick those cards up if you just, you know, raise your hand. Candidates, Colin is going to be in the front of the stage, and he will keep time. He will let you know when you have 15 seconds left and when you must stop. So at this time, audience, please go ahead and silence your cell phones. And I'm going to ask that you all show respect for each one of the candidates who have engaged in this process. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, or otherwise responding with anything other than positive nods until the whole forum has concluded. So let's begin. As I announce each candidate's name, please come and join me on the stage. So Pasco City Council, position number two. We have the incumbent Joe Campos. Joe, if you're here, would you please join us? And I'm going to speed this along, so you may be walking up, but I'll be calling your opponent right after you. Charles Grimm, position number two. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Charles. Position number three, Irving Brown, the incumbent, and Leo Peralas. Thank you, Leo. Thank you, Irving. Position number five. David Milne, who is our incumbent, and James Zebatar, position number five. Thank you, David. Thank you, James. And at-large, Peter Harpster and Kim Lerman. And there is no incumbent for this position, so we have two fresh new choices. Thank you so much. So starting with position two, I'm going to just walk down the table, and each of you have 60 seconds for your opening statement. Joe Campos, would you like to begin?
Thank you, Ms. Francick. Lifelong Pasco resident. I was born at Our Lady of Lords in 1987. I graduated from Pasco High in 2005. In fact, I think I wrestled with one of Mrs. Francick's boys and lifelong roots in this community and have been serving as the incumbent for District Two and would like to continue to do so and happy to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm.
Hi, you guys. I am one of you. I am a board member of the Pasco Chamber of Commerce. I own a small business here in Pasco, and I try to support small business wherever I can. I look at this table, and I see our president here, who I bought many advertisements from in his paper. I look at Christine Vera, who I often buy donuts from for my crew, and I look right here at the owners of Minuteman Press, who have pretty much, I think, have 100% of all of my campaign materials I've bought through them. So I try to support Pasco. I try to breathe Pasco. And again, I am one of you, and I will be a champion for small business in Pasco.
Thank you, Irving Brown.
Good afternoon, everyone. First, I wanted to say thank you for the privilege of serving currently as your representative for District Three in Pasco and the recently appointing as your Mayor Pro Tem. My goal for Pasco is to just simply do better, look better, and feel better. And I think together, we can do that as a collective team. There's a lot to say, but with 60 seconds, it's not enough. I just, again, like I said, I appreciate the opportunity, and as I continue to serve Pasco in any capacity, I count it all joy. So I appreciate it, and I look forward to continue building with you all.
Thank you, Leo Peralas.
Hello. Awesome. Well, my name's Leo Peralas, and I'm running for Pasco City Council. I'm running because I want our children and your grandchildren to have the same opportunities that we've all had here in Pasco. I want our city to be the safest in Washington with well-funded police, fire, and public work services. I want us to be a business and developer-friendly city hall that facilitates growth and not stifles it. I want people to be able to go to downtown and feel safe without seeing homelessness and illicit drug use that's been pretty rampant here in the downtown area. I'm a general manager for an engineering and special inspection firm here in the Tri-Cities. I've actually inspected a lot of the infrastructure that you guys see, from roadways to bridges to taxiways. I've been doing that for about 17 years here in the construction community and very proud of that. I have three kids and a wife and four dogs, and I hope to be your next council member for Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas. Mr. Milne.
Hi there, David Milne. I know a lot of you guys because I try to attend the Chamber lunches regularly. I'm just proud to be, live here in Pasco. I have four kids. I have two daughters that are now serving in the U.S. military, which is a challenge as a parent. But I love Pasco. I'm very accessible. I own Milne Nail Power to Repair, a small business on Lewis Street. And again, I have some great ideas for Pasco. I'd like to see them fulfilled. More lights in downtown Pasco is being one thing. And yeah, I just try my best to be active in our community, always be accessible, and try to do whatever I can to make Pasco a better and better city and always moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. James Zebatar.
Good afternoon. Thank you inviting us all to this event. I stand before you a citizen born a few thousand feet from the spot you are sitting. For generations, my family has farmed these lands. Pasco is my home. I choose to live here, where the water and air are clean, where the people are educated and diverse, where my children can get a good education. I'm no stranger to civil service. I volunteered for 12 years on the Kennewick School District Technology Advisory Committee. I was an employee of Benton County, where I assisted elected officials regularly. For County Clerk Josie Devlin, I wrote software to facilitate the implementation of a digital record-keeping system. For Sheriff Steve Keen and the Sheriff's Detective Office, I deployed their cellphone technology and assisted in forensic technical evidence gathering. When I worked for WSU, I was tasked with multiple forensic investigations by the university and assisted Pullman Police Department officers tasked with operating child predator sex stings. In my classes as an engineer at a national laboratory, I work on large projects, manage budgets, write proposals, and collaborate with others to achieve the scientific goals of our federal government. I believe my experiences and skills would be of service to the City of Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zebatar. Mr. Harpster.
Hi, my name's Peter Harpster, otherwise known as Peter for Pasco. Run for the at-large position on Pasco City Council, position seven. The reason I'm running for city council is simple. I have a passion for serving people in my local community. It's what I do in my day job. It's why I serve on the School District Instruction Materials Committee and why I serve on the Franklin County Planning Commission. The issues facing the City of Pasco are very obvious. We have 40,000 people moving here over the next 18 years, and that's going to require 23,000 housing units. And so we need to make sure that we have members of council who have experience in planning and project management, which is what I've been doing for the last 13 years. In my work, I helped to plan, design, and build subdivisions in the City of Pasco. And we have to think about things like road networks and infrastructure that will serve future residents, much like how we need council members to be thinking about the future and adequately planning for it. Don't just take my word for it. I have the endorsement of our former Mayor Saul Martinez, former councilwoman Nikki Torres, the Tri-Cities Association of Realtors, the Home Builders Association of Tri-Cities, and several others. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster. Ms. Lerman.
Thank you to Pasco Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum. My name is Kim Lerman. I'm running for Pasco City Council, position seven, and at-large position to represent all of Pasco. I am a Pasco Planning Commissioner. I've listened to residents' and businesses' needs in order to help create a well-planned city for now and for in the future. I'm a high school teacher. I serve students and their families from east to west Pasco and all demographics every single day of the week. I grew up on a family farm, taught welding. I volunteered for years on boards and committees, including 10 years of coaching Pasco's youth. Most importantly, I am a mom of four raising my children with the value to love thy neighbor and to hold Pasco pride in their hearts. I want a future of Pasco where residents feel safe and can afford to live, work, and play in Pasco. With an estimated 40,000 additional residents expected to arrive in the next 20 years, voters deserve to have an at-large position council member who listens and serves with an open heart.
Vote Kim Lerman. Thanks, Ms. Lerman. Okay, the first question. You each have 45 seconds to respond, and we're going to start with position two, Joe Campos. Could you please tell us what vision you have for downtown Pasco and one specific issue you would address?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Downtown Pasco, I'd like to see it continue to be... I'd like to see downtown Pasco to continue to be a diverse opportunity for businesses to thrive. I want an opportunity for people who go down there to have a diverse choice of businesses to patronize and to continue to have fun and family events down there. Our farmers' market's well-attended. The Fiery Foods Festival's well-attended. Our Cinco de Mayo is well-attended. I'd like to continue to see us build direct tradition and just go from there. We already have a well-established culture, and I don't feel like it's important to mix things up. I think that trying to give an opportunity to maybe mitigate the homelessness is, as Councilman Milne has addressed, having better lighting, I think, would contribute to seeing your businesses better served down there. That, I think, would be a big contribution.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Same question.
Thank you. Downtown Pasco should be a place of commerce, culture, and community. And really, the basis for that is businesses. It is small businesses. It's around this room. If we don't have stable, vibrant businesses in downtown Pasco, we don't have a downtown Pasco. And so it is really important to protect those businesses. To, you know, obviously, as the city, we can't promote them, so to speak. But what can we do in our zoning and like what was previously mentioned, lighting and other things? And really, part of it is, too, is to tackle the vagrancy and other issues that may be a deterrent of people going downtown. We should have reasons for drawing people, reasons people want to go downtown and not reasons that would deter people from going downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
For downtown Pasco, what I would like to see is more unification. I love to see us just work together for the common good of the City of Pasco. And I believe that there's more diversity and inclusion and invitation with this downtown Pasco. It really would represent who we are in its entirety in the city. So if we come together and stand united and really develop, redevelop, and build downtown Pasco where it's fully inclusive, I think that's a big W, called a win, for the City of Pasco. We've talked about the lighting. Everyone's going to talk about lighting, so it's on my list, too. So thank you very much.
Appreciate it. If you want to know more about my plan for downtown Pasco, just go to leoforpasco.com. Environmental design is a big thing, and they've been doing that for a number of years. But we need to focus on the homelessness and illicit drug use. The state legislature, typically from the liberal side, is making our downtown areas dangerous. Like I said, I've talked to many people in the downtown area, and you can see that by the amount of support I have in downtown. A lot of people don't feel safe, and other people do. I've talked to people who work for the City of Pasco and who don't like going down there for work. They are afraid. And so I think we need to really focus on that. We have a good diverse group of businesses in downtown now. We've made the right investments with Peanuts Park, eventually with the North Plaza, and also with the Lewis Street Overpass. But we need to start cleaning that stuff up before businesses start leaving, and we don't see the vibrancy that we see now. Thank you.
Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mrs. Francick. Yeah, so being on the council, you basically have a chance to work with the downtown. I know as a council member, I went down almost every year to talk to the different business owners. Unfortunately, the members that were with me have since left the council. But I do believe that there's an interchange that we need to do and talk to the business owners to see what do they need. And another, obviously, the lights. I've always been bright up the place. That's been a huge issue of mine. Of course, the murals, trying to get that accomplished has been a huge challenge. Finally got it done, which I'm proud of. But again, another thing I think we need to look at is besides the security is just trying to do things that make sense. I mean, if we have an issue with people in the farmer's market in the daytime, let's play music. Let's do something where it gets them out. I mean, again, you can play music, and, you know, it's a small world, and it would get them out. So we just need to come up with common reasons to improve the downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Zebatar.
We currently have a negative feedback loop. We need a positive feedback loop, virtuous growth cycle. We hear a lot of talk about homelessness, but there's been no discussion about the causes. Where's the talk about the mental illness issue, the substance abuse? These issues need to be addressed if you want to help these people. There is no other real solution than addressing the causes rather than trying to scapegoat them. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Harpster.
Thanks. Yeah, a lot of talk about how bad downtown is, I think, is wrong. The downtown's been cleaned up a lot in the last several years, and Peanuts Park has been redone. The farmer's market area's been redone. And it's actually really nice and not what it used to be. To keep improving on that, we should address issues like homelessness and illicit drug use. And the Benton Franklin Recovery Center that's opening next year is going to be a huge part in doing that. When we can clean that up, then we can turn those people who are dealing with substance abuse issues and other issues into contributing citizens to pass wherever else they may live. And in so doing, we take what we've already cleaned up, and then the people kind of occupying the area get them help as well, and it's just a really good match, I think. The, like I said, it's really cleaned up, and we were most recent there for the Fiery Foods Festival, and there was more people there than I'd seen in several years. And it reminded me of how it used to be when I was a kid. So looking forward to continued efforts down there.
Thank you. Ms. Lerman.
As a Pasco council member, downtown is the heart of the city, and we cannot forget about our responsibility to all parts of Pasco. And so there is not a spot in the city that you can wash your hands of. Our downtown Pasco small businesses need our support. They need to make sure that they are free from harassment, that they can be able to conduct business in an open and safe way, that facades, lighting, trees, reducing the amount of heat in the urban hot zone of downtown are all things that we need to consider and things that we consider on the Planning Commission that I serve on.
Thank you very much. Were you done?
I'm fine.
Okay. Question number two, and we're going to start with Irving Brown. What do you see as the most pressing problems facing Pasco? And what will you do to address that problem or those problems?
Well, one of them is on my list, the homeless crisis that we currently have. And I'm not sure who spoke about that, but that's a wonderful topic for all of us to be inclusive in. So our homelessness situation needs immediate addressing. If we do not address it immediately, it will look like what happened in Seattle. The question is, do we want that? But on the flip side of that, how are we taking care of those that are homeless? So there's a mental health side of it. There's a clinical health side of it. But how do we, not I, how do we become inclusive enough to develop these people that are dealing with homeless situations? And that's hot on my list, so thank you.
There's so many issues, really. But I would say right now, it's housing and affordability. In Franklin County, a lot of people can't even afford a home. The median-priced home in Franklin County is about $450,000. And so you need about a gross amount of about $130,000 to even afford one. In our community, only about 13% of people or families can even afford a home in our community. That's wrong. We need to start addressing it from, really, the root causes. Zoning, there's a lot of zoning. The City of Pasco has actually done a very good job in regards to zoning recently by changing from single-family to more multifamily zoning. But there's a lot of regulations. There's things like transportation impact fees. There's a lot of other things that we can be looking at that are stifling growth. And I believe we need to start working with developers and listening to them. I think that we need to work with experts because they're the ones who know, and for a long time, they have been telling them things that are stifling growth, but they're not listening. And so I want to be a bridge and hopefully, along with the council, to start addressing those. Thank you.
Mr. Milne.
Thank you. There's a couple things that come to mind immediately. I know we've had problems with connectivity, the roads. 68's been always a problem. But we're now talking about the development of the Adams property. We're going to have issues on Road 100. And I just want to get in front of this. I know I've also dealt with people racing, where I almost got killed a couple times on my bike. So these are huge concerns. But also, I have a business in the downtown corridor, and we've had problems with people camping out in front of our store, taking stuff to make home shelters. So this is a big issue with me. I know, you know, not everybody believes the same on the council. So as a councilman, you need to work, try to create a plan. And we have actually talked about it a lot, but we need to move forward. Talk is cheap. So definitely, what we could do to move this forward and actually take action, and that's what I'd like to accomplish.
Thank you. Mr. Zebatar.
We've heard the big ones: homelessness, car racing. There are other issues that are affecting people. We have issues with permitting. Lead times are long. The process is slow. We have an anonymous code enforcement system that is often abused by people to harass others. We have a lot of infrastructure-clogging problems, as we've talked about. Road 68 is a mess. As we grow, we need to have infrastructure built with houses, not after the fact.
Thank you. Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, the biggest issue facing the City of Pasco today, as I mentioned in my opening statement, is the growth that we're expected to have. And how I would go about solving that, I think that was the second part of the question, is direct collaboration with city staff. In my day job, like I said, we're building subdivisions. We actually brought the nation's largest home builder here to Pasco. And that whole process took a lot of collaboration with Director Gonzalez and the CED staff at the City of Pasco. And I'm probably bugging him multiple times a week. And so I've got the experience of dealing with staff. And it's important for council members to understand that we're elected by the people, and the staff members have the actual experience dealing with very specific things like infrastructure planning and things like that. And so a lot of collaboration and communication between council staff is important to address that head-on.
Ms. Lerman.
I agree. Affordable housing is definitely, that's a crisis. When you have students and students' families who have to work two, three jobs in order to be able to have a roof over their head, not even a home they can own, a home that they can rent, they can rent, that takes away from families to be able to build upon generational wealth because that generational wealth's not there. That takes away from the opportunity for families to be able to save up money, to be able to eventually retire, to be able to retire. The list goes on and on, including it even decreases students' ability to perform academically. And so affordable housing is an issue. The city, and I'm very proud to be able to have served on the planning commission and voting in new zoning, including codifying unattached dwelling units, added to the opportunity for increasing our rental stock here in Pasco.
Thank you. Mr. Campos.
Thank you. I think homelessness is the biggest issue. We've heard that a lot of the issues are kind of compounding and they all interact with one another. And as a council member, I think the biggest way to address this is work with your city staff to help implement our master plans. We have a plan set forward for next year, if elected, to help contribute to a housing implementation plan. And it's very important that you have somebody who's got firsthand knowledge with planning and zoning on the commission to be able to help implement that, which then should help alleviate the homelessness, help increase our stock and allow lower income families to have an opportunity to buy and enjoy a home. Outside of that, it really just trickles down. There's a lot of other action plans, again, traffic being a big one, that we need to be able to collaborate with one another, not just at our staff level, but with other council members.
Mr. Grimm.
A few of them have been mentioned. Yes, growth is huge. Housing availability and affordability is also super important, but for me, it comes down to law and order. If we do not have our quality of life in a safe place to live, we've kind of lost everything at that point. You look at the legislation that's come from the Olympia area, we look at what's happened to those large west coast cities because they have not supported their police, they haven't funded their police, or in other ways have allowed crime to really take over our city and we cannot let that happen here, especially as the small business community. We will all be threatened at that point. So really, that is first and foremost. Chief Roski recently pointed out at a meeting that we are seeing a downward trend in crime and that's great, but we need to do whatever we can to protect our quality of life here and have law and order or we have nothing else. Thank you.
The third question is going to start with Mr. Milne. Pasco residents feel let down by the news about the tentative location of Costco being moved to West Richland. What specific steps will you take as a council member to have more businesses like Costco choose to invest into Pasco?
Well, I think with the, as a council, of course, we were disappointed as well. Again, that was the private owner not coming to agreement with Costco. Again, I was excited about it. I think everybody in the council was very excited about it, so huge disappointment. But I think what the council did, and I think it was the right step, is we actually built, we funded, we built the infrastructure so that when these places do come, there will be the bigger roads, there will be the intersections. In the past, it's been that basically when the thing is approved, then the roads come up and it takes a lot longer. So we're trying to do, trying to be on the forefront, trying to do what we can to encourage growth in the Adams area and do it the correct way. And I believe that as a council, we made the right choice.
Mr. Zebatar.
The growth is coming, whether or not we like it, so are the businesses. It's a bit myopic, in my opinion, to be too concerned whether or not Costco appears in Pasco or in Richland or in Kennewick. We are one large metropolis at this point, even if we do have smaller cities and governments that compose that. We should be collaborating with all of our citizens across all of the cities to have a fair and open tax incentive to bring businesses to Pasco, Kennewick, Richland, West Richland, all of us.
Thank you. Mr. Harpster.
Do you mind repeating the question, please?
Sure. Pasco residents feel let down by the news about the tentative location of Costco being moved to West Richland. What specific steps will you take to have more businesses like Costco choose to invest in Pasco?
Yeah, well, Mr. Milne said it best. It was a private landowner and a private company dealing together. And so there's been a lot of unfair blame put on the current council and on staff. Staff doesn't own the land out there. What staff has done and what I want to encourage as a council member is they've used what's called TIF financing. They were one of the first jurisdictions in the whole state to use that. What that does is builds infrastructure ahead of time to encourage development and then the fees for that are paid back over time through taxes. And so, look, Costco didn't come, but there's still the door open for them. Personally, I think the whole thing they're doing in Richland is just a game that they're playing with Mr. Adams, the property owner out there. That location is not nearly as good as the Broadmoor area. And if they don't come, somebody else will. Hopefully Chick-fil-A, Trader Joe's, Cabela's, Target, there's a number of retailers that are still involved and interested in the Broadmoor area and we'll get something out there.
Ms. Lerman.
Yeah, it was disappointing and many, I agree with many Pasco citizens that it's difficult to hear that Costco will not be coming out. But however, it was also interesting how the information was shared out. It was shared out more from the developer and the landowner, not from the city of Pasco. So I was really proud when I saw about around July that the city of Pasco decided to address the rumors and to be able to educate the community. And I really feel as a teacher that that part's missing and we need to be able to increase that here in the city of Pasco to communicate well to our residents, not just after something happens, but before that, to be able to educate them what our roles are. In this case, that was a private transaction. Another thing, too, I'm very proud of the work that the planning commission's been doing, including being the first in the state to be able to have the tax bill increment financing. And this will open up opportunities for future businesses.
Thank you. Mr. Campos.
Thank you. Again, we've mentioned the tax increment financing. As a council member, that was the biggest thing we could do to help encourage and support new businesses out there. You do not want your government telling you, a private citizen, what you should or shouldn't do with your property. Again, as we've said before, if it's not Costco, hopefully it'll be somebody else. And because we've supported the ability to develop the infrastructure first, we can avoid traffic problems like we saw on Road 68. As a council member, continue to support staff. You know, our economic development director and our finance department brought the tax increment financing for us and they absolutely had my support for it. And I encourage them to be innovative and lead our industry in trying to be creative and help support our community in different ways.
Thank you. Mr. Grimm.
Thank you. I have to mention it again, since everybody else has the tax increment financing, which allowed us to put the infrastructure out front, but I don't mean to sound like another broken record, but does come back to law and order again, you guys. We all saw the news of the recent nine Target locations closing. Why did they leave? It's out of control crime. We have to have law and order in our city to protect our quality of life, whether that be downtown, trying to, you know, clean up vagrancy to where people want to go downtown or having a place out in West Pasco where businesses feel comfortable that they can make that large of an investment and that it will be protected and people will want to be drawn there. But yes, again, it comes back to having a place that has law and order, quality of life, where businesses see it worth their investment into our community. Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Overall, I think Pasco needs to just continue being innovative and beautiful as the city is. We are trend setters. I think everyone in the room can probably agree that Pasco is a city that sets trends for greatness. And we need to just continue that path in being innovative and invitive to many businesses that are looking to come to Pasco. Not that anything is wrong, but if we continue the communication and globally look for, with an intentional mindset to develop Pasco, we just need to continue the great work that I believe we're already doing. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peres.
I've actually talked a lot about this, but I think the truth is somewhere in the middle. Sure, it was probably between the landowner and Costco. You know, we also hear things about the planning department putting demands and this is nothing new. You know, planning departments will put demands on developers and stuff if they want to develop something. That's nothing new. I think we have neighbors that have done similar things. I mean, when I lived in Kennewick for some time, council members, they would encourage businesses to come. I mean, we saw AutoZone come and over into their commercial over in King City. So we can work, when I was on the council and if I heard that Costco wasn't coming, I would have talked with the mayor, staff, what can we do to encourage them? Give it to private developer, what can we do? Provide financial incentives. I'm not saying give away the farm, but we want Costco, property taxes, sales taxes, utility taxes. But like many people have said, I think we can bring people back to the table here very soon because like I also believe that that's not really going to happen in Richland.
Thank you. Question number four is going to start with our at-large candidates. So are you supportive of the use of impact fees for schools, parks, and traffic for Pasco? Mr. Harpster.
Well, working in development, I deal with this a lot and have coordinated with the school district on impact fees for a lot of different subdivisions. And some developers fight the fees. We just pay them. We understand they're doing a really good work. It would be worth taking a second look at them. The council and school board, I believe it was 2011 when they came to that agreement, the impact fees would be paid to fund future development of schools. That may not be needed anymore with the bonds that have been passed for new schools. It may still be needed. It's worth a conversation, but I wouldn't be for completely getting rid of impact fees because we've got, like we've been saying, 40,000 people moving here and they have kids and those kids need an education. And so whatever we can do to provide a good education, that's going to continue to attract more people and produce better citizens that hopefully want to stay here in Pasco.
Thank you. Ms. Lerman.
Impact fees is necessary for our survival, for our ability to have quality education, but also for our roads, our sidewalks, our lighting, and our parks. People who want to move into our community want to enjoy their quality of life here. And so revisiting impact fees is a good idea, however, it might even look at a different direction. For example, when you put in a development and the city says there's going to be a mow strip and that you pay the impact fees and we'll come back and we'll go ahead and mow it for decades and beyond, that impact fee no longer helps pay for that. And so making sure that there is a revisit to be able to analyze it from top down to make sure that we're doing a quality of job of not only collecting the impact fees, but using them for what they need in order for our residents to be able to have the best quality of life that we can be able to afford here in Pasco.
Mr. Campos.
Thank you. As we're aware, new growth usually pays for new growth outside of the tax increment finance area. And so we want those fees to be able to help pay for new infrastructure. Now, the caveat is, and a way that some people aren't looking at, is sometimes those impact fees can help us control growth. We look at how exponentially we've grown in the last 20 years. Sometimes having those impact fees can kind of help curb that and help us grow more strategically with a little bit more planning on the backend of things. And so fees shouldn't necessarily be a bad thing or an evil thing, they are a necessary thing and revisiting them from time to time as our staff does is smart.
Thank you. Mr. Grimm.
Yes, I agree with everyone else that they are necessary. However, are they fair? That would be my question. You know, can we look at similar sized cities around Washington to see if the price we are charging for those impact fees is fair? You know, and maybe we're charging too little. It might be hard for some to believe, but maybe it is too much. But that's, when we hear feedback from the citizenry, from the builders, that they say, hey, it's too much or it's not fair, I would love to be able to turn around and say, no, we analyze that and this is fair for that reason. And I say we do the same for dog license fees and every other fee that citizens or residents or builders or anybody that does business with the city of Pasco has to pay. Are they getting a fair price? Are they getting their money's worth and are we being good stewards of those finances? Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, impact fees are helpful in many different ways, but I agree with Ms. Kim Lerman in that a revisit would be beneficial and helpful. There's a variable things that impact fees help with and 45 seconds is not enough time to do that with, but we all know how well they work. A revisit to those to create fairness is exactly what we need. Thank you.
Mr. Peres.
Appreciate it. Yeah, no, I've heard some pretty good nuggets. I didn't hear that with the bonding that maybe these fees are probably not needed. That's probably something we can look at, but I think it's hard, maybe from a government that's used to issuing out fees and taxes, it's hard for them to kind of maybe rein it back. But you know, that's a big thing that I've talked about in regards to housing is reviewing all these fees and regulations. I mean, those amount to about $100,000 here in the state of Washington and those aren't my numbers, those are from experts here in the state of Washington. So I think we should review them. You know, I know city of Kennewick has a yearly developer summit where they come in and talk with developers and they talk about traffic impact fees, school impact fees, you know, do we need to go away from them? And so, yeah, no, most definitely, but if we're going to talk about it, we need to be about it and actually see it through.
Thank you. Mr. Milne.
Thank you. So when we talk about school impact fees, which is a very good question, I think whether we're going to revisit it or not, I think you need to bring the county involved. It's basically, to me, it's the most irritating thing to hear that the county basically doesn't pay the impact fees, yet then we annex those areas into the city. So basically, the people are getting a free ride. I mean, basically should be that we get together with the council, the commissioners, and sort this thing out because it's been going on for years. And I hear so much that, hey, you know, we've just annexed, and it seems like when our city is growing and growing and growing, we're annexing and annexing these areas, these developments that don't have sidewalks. But again, it all comes down to the money issue and if we're going to annex these areas and we know we're going to do it, let's get the county involved, let's talk this out and let's get everybody on the same page. It's, again, very frustrating that it's gone on this long.
Mr. Zebatar.
My short answer is yes, I support impact fees. If you have growth without planning and without infrastructure, you basically have municipal cancer. We have to pay for that infrastructure and that planning and some of that money needs to come upfront. That's the long and the short of it.
Thank you. Question number five, and we're going to start back with Joe Campos. What skills or experiences do you have that make you best able to represent the constituents in your district?
Thank you. Again, lifelong Pasco citizen. I know exactly who we are and where we're going. I know what our community is, I know what I needed as a young man, I know what I need now as an adult. I was a father at 17 and now I've got an adult daughter and I know what her future holds and I want to see her have more than I had. And so that makes me unique in this opportunity. I've got some project management experience, I'm a planner by nature, and I think that being grassroots sets me leaps and bounds ahead of everybody else, but then the firsthand experience on the council, I know the work that we've done, I know the work that we're going to do and I know what it takes to get there.
Thank you. Mr. Grimm.
I just have a passion for serving. I have five kids aged 16 to one years old who live here in Pasco, who I want a better quality of life for them than what I had. I own a business here in Pasco, I employ 20 people here in Pasco and so I have skin in the game to protect our quality of life here. And again, I've spent my entire adult life serving people in every capacity. I believe in servant-style leadership where it's my job to serve others, that I am really the bottom of the food chain as an elected official, as a business owner, that my whole purpose is to empower, enable everyone else to do the best they can with their God-given talents and abilities. And so with that, I would just love the opportunity to serve the city of Pasco in the position two of the city council. Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
My first would be servant hood. This is where I fit the best. Serving people is just a knack for me, it's God-given and parent-driven. My professionalism and human resources, there is just a love for people in the whole job itself. There's the highs and the lows of it all. A current member of this great council that I'm currently on has given me some roots to continue growing with. My experience as a dad definitely has taught me how to deal with tantrums. So I think I have some pretty good experience so far on how to navigate through the waters and continue being a great blessing to the city of Pasco. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peres.
Appreciate it. Well, I have a lot of experience in working in city government as a volunteer. I've attended city council meetings for years, both, we live in Kennewick here in Pasco. I've been committed to a host of issues. I've been a planning commissioner, I've been a housing authority commissioner, code enforcement commissioner, I've done work with community policing here in both Kennewick and Pasco. I'm always, you know, I like to seek out challenges and kind of expand my knowledge base and collaborate with people in our community and make our community a better place. You know, I live here in Pasco and I want to make this better for my children and for the children to come. And so I think that would be my skill set. My campaign's doorbilled almost 800 doors. I'm meeting people on their front porch and talking about issues that matter to them. And so I'm willing to get out there and, you know, pull up my sleeves and do the hard work to ensure that our community is successful.
Thank you. Mr. Milne.
Yeah, I think the talent that I bring is uniqueness. I have worked in the downtown part of Pasco for 30 years, always talking to different people, getting to know people when they're checking out or when, you know, they're trying to buy something. But also then living in West Pasco, you hear a different side of life. So, and then when you're involved in Rotary, you get involved in the community. Obviously, I was a football, youth football coach for a number of years. So I just think that I bring a lot of different skill sets and I also bring that I'm always accessible, I'm always willing to talk to people, I'm willing to hear different points of view. And I think sometimes as political people, we get in a little niche and I just try to get along with everybody. And I think that's one of the most positive skill sets I do bring is that just I can always be found and I'm always willing to see what I could do to make Pasco a better place. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Zebatar.
I'm a scientist and an engineer by trade. I take a keen analytical approach to every problem that I come across. I work with a, a team of individuals who keep high-performance Linux supercomputers online. I believe my skill set would be quite useful to the city and to the people at large. I'm no stranger to public service. I think we need more civic involvement in general and more participation in the whole country. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, on a personal side, civic involvement runs in my family. And when I was a child, I was on the police chief's advisory board as the youth representative when Chief Austin was police chief. And sit on the Franklin County Planning Commission as a commissioner and the school district instructional materials committee right now. On the professional side, this is like a job application, right? And I've got the experience that the city needs to manage, to help manage the growth that's coming. The current council that we have is great. I'm, I'm friends with all of them, although I just met councilwoman Blaisdell today. But nobody on the current council has the experience dealing on, on the private side of infrastructure building and development. And so that's a, a very real skill that I can bring to the table to help guide the city through the growth, and it's why I'm endorsed by our former mayor, Saul Martinez, as well as the Home Builders Association and the Tri-City Association of Realtors.
Thank you, Ms. Lerman.
On the professional side, being a high school teacher, I see a lot of temper tantrums. But what I know is inside that I need to treat them with dignity. That student, that child is hurting. When we work with adults, sometimes they're also hurting. And often, we forget to treat each other with dignity. So, as a teacher, I have that daily experience every single day of being challenged by 150 different family members here in Pasco, represented through those 150 students, of how to be able to not wear my beliefs on my sleeves, because once I do that, then I'm not fully educating and giving equal opportunity to every single student. So, as a council member, that's absolutely what I would end up doing, is welcoming all voices, all diverse voices, and treating every single resident with respect and dignity as they deserve.
Thank you. Mr. Hastings, we have five more distinct questions. How, how are we doing on time? Okay. The last question, then, we'll start with Mr. Brown, position number three. We've heard that there are 40,000 people coming to Pasco. What would you do to make or maintain our community awareness of our diversity?
That's a big number of people. Actually, I, I think, again, I look at Pasco because of how Pasco welcomed me in 2008 when I came. It was a very diverse, loving neighborhood feel that told you you were welcome from the minute you were moving in off the moving truck. Someone brought cookies and donuts. This is just the heart of Pasco. I feel it, I live it, and breathe it every day. I really wouldn't want to change anything about that because I think Pasco has a heart for the people. It's very welcoming, and I would continue doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas. We've heard that there are 40,000 people coming to Pasco. So, what would you do as a council member to make or maintain our community awareness of our diversity?
That's an interesting question. I don't know, I always hear things about diversity and, you know, I think sometimes we get hung on these buzzwords, diversity, equity, inclusion. You know, I was born in Pasco, raised in the Tri-Cities my whole life. You know, the thing that binds us more in Pasco is just our values. I think anyone who comes here and works here, I know lots of people who came here just for work and they ended up staying. I think those are the things that we should be providing awareness about. You know, we're, you know, really, we're still a small-knit community, but we're starting to kind of become a metropolitan one. And I think that's what we should try and maintain and provide awareness to and, and show that people that, you know, this is a really big, this is one of the biggest gems here in southeastern Washington and, and a great place to put, to put down some roots. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Milne.
Thank you. I think the best way to show your diversity when you have new people coming in is through art. You know, you put artwork in, whether it be roundabouts or in other places where, and again, a lot of times the art can be done by local professionals, so it doesn't cost as much. And again, as I said earlier, murals, stuff like you could actually see what the stages that Pasco has gone through. I think that's a great example of showing our diversity, but also giving people a way to connect with the history. Again, if the council so chose, I would be somewhat in support of a culture center. I think that could have its benefits. Again, I, I'm definitely open to anything, but I think mainly we show our history, but we also push things forward that allow us to come together and hopefully a bright, full future for Pasco.
Thank you, Mr. Zebatar.
I believe the city does have a place in encouraging culture and art. What I would not do is push divisive rhetoric and try to make this a east side of the state versus west side of the state issue where there appears to be some scapegoating of where these future people are coming from. We should be inclusive of everybody from wherever they may come from to resettle here in our great city. I would push for being inclusive of people who are not from this area.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, when you Google Pasco, one of the first results that comes up is the city of Pasco's website that says we're an inclusive city. And when I first saw it, I thought that's kind of funny to just say that, but the council has actually put that into action. And about every other week, there's a proclamation that Mayor Barahaus reads supporting one group of individuals or another, most recently was disabled workers. And that's really cool to see. And some people might look at it and say, this is, this is a waste. It's ceremony, it's, you know, pomp, and, but it's very important that those groups are, are recognized, heard, understood, and it gives people in the audience and other councilors the opportunity to introduce themselves to them, learn more from them. I'm really excited for the 40,000 people that are moving here and I hope that they're as diverse as the population we currently have. And we've got a, a obviously diverse Hispanic population and as well as a, a very large Russian, Ukrainian population that often gets forgotten about, but the, the future's great diversity-wise.
And Ms. Lerman.
I too have always been impressed with the city of Pasco, how they have led other cities on how, what an inclusive city looks like. However, there is work to be done and therefore that's why I've spent time with council, council member Zar Roach on drafting proclamations in order to be able to celebrate our unique heritage, which in my family is Asian Pacific Islander Month of May. And so the last three years, that has been celebrated at the city level, and I've seen many other heritage also celebrated too, along with diversity of abilities. And continuing to be able to host those opportunities also need to be coupled with action, making sure that all of our policies are inclusive and that even our website is inclusive, that we see all the heritages that are celebrated in our Pasco residence home, but also here in the city itself.
Thank you, Mr. Campos.
Yeah, Madam Moderator, if you could clarify the question one more time. I believe the question is that how do we keep inclusivity at the forefront of everybody's mindset?
How do we make or maintain our community awareness of our diversity?
Community aware, okay, thank you. Well, in that case, if we can go back to Pasco's history, you know, we started as a railroad town and we know the railroad history. A lot of Chinese and African Americans followed the railroad town. And obviously, our cultural identity has changed significantly since then. How do we maintain that awareness and how do we help continue to kind of keep that at the forefront of everybody's mind? And I think Mr. Harpster brought up a great point. Our, our mayor does a really good job of providing proclamations, something the council has done before as we've come up with a diversity and inclusion committee. And I think that having a well-defined and supportive community idea behind that and driven behind that would help other communities feel engaged. Again, we have a changing, constantly, we may not look the same culturally in the next 30 years, and that's okay, but we should be able to support one another.
Thank you. Mr. Grimm.
I believe every single person is an image bearer of God and thus they deserve dignity, respect, and should be free from intimidation, free from harassment. And thus, they, they are deserving of really all of the respect that we can give anybody. And, you know, Pasco was the very first city in the entire Pacific Northwest to become majority Hispanic. We are diverse if we look around, but, you know, perhaps it's how council member Milne said, it's maybe telling that story better. But we are who we are, but it comes down to how do we treat each and every individual person with the respect, the dignity they deserve as human beings. And we should all live that out within ourselves. And if we can live that out as citizens, our laws and the culture will reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of our question period. Our candidates are now going to have 30 seconds for their closing statements, and we're going to start with position three. So, Mr. Brown, would you like to give us your closing statement?
Thank you. As I continue this current campaign to retain as your city council representative for District Three and now hopefully moving forward as your mayor pro tem for this great city of Pasco, my slogan is "Building Pasco's Future." And the only way to build Pasco's future is with a "we" mentality. And I believe we have all the elements and the ingredients, ingredients to do that. We have to just come together, take the invitation to sit at the table to continue building a great Pasco, and that is my goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas.
Just want to say thank you to the Pasco Chamber. Now, I believe this is a change election and I really do believe we need change in City Hall. You know, not to piggyback on what he said, but, you know, this campaign in this city is, it's not about me. This is really about we here in the city of Pasco. And, you know, if you live in the city of Pasco, it's our city. We need to really start expecting more. We need to start expecting that our city council and city address homelessness, housing affordability, the Tri-City Animal Shelter, business growth. So, go to leopropasco.com if you want to learn more about my candidacy, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Milne.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I believe that when people look at me as a councilman, hopefully they see that it's, it's not about myself, but it's about service above self. It's about being there for the community, just showing up at events, to be involved in your community, and hopefully I have done that. Hopefully, I have garnered another four-year term. Again, I've tried my best to always be involved in the community, to love Pasco and to push my version of what Pasco is, but to also work with the other councilmembers. I never want it to be just my ideological ideas, but to also work with everybody here people. And again, I'm very thankful that I've been in the city of Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zebatar.
Thank you again for your time. Pasco is growing. We have tens of thousands of new citizens projected in 10 years. Our current infrastructure is already overtaxed and anyone driving down Road 68 can see it. We must, as a community, figure out how we're going to develop the infrastructure to support future growth. At the same time, we must address the concerns of current citizens such as permitting lead times, homelessness, gang activity, anonymous code enforcements used as harassment, car racing, and other issues citizens present to us. Thank you. Have a good day. Feel free to ask me any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, the at-large position that I'm running for covers the entire city of Pasco. And I'm the only candidate qualified to represent all of Pasco because I've lived and worked in every area of Pasco. Grew up on the east side in a double-wide trailer before we moved to central Pasco, four doors down from the main entrance to Pasco High School where I graduated in '09. After leaving the Air Force, I moved back to Pasco, bought a house in the Road 68 area, then the Road 100 area, and now my wife and I are raising our family in central Pasco. I, I've been here when we were 30,000 people. I'm here now that we're 80, and I'll be here when we're 130,000 people. Please vote Peter for Pasco.
Thank you, Ms. Lerman.
As a 21-year-old Pasco resident, we first moved here not because we had family based here, but because we saw Pasco as a land of opportunity for our future home and for our future children. I am the only candidate here out of my race that has had the experience of what it takes to sacrifice in order to be able to help support, and in this case, my family would support me as an elected official. My husband's here of 21 years. He has served nine and a half years on the school board. Our entire family understands the sacrifice that it will take from each and every one, from the seven-year-old up to the 18-year-old. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campos.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This job is extremely thankless and you work 24/7 at it, even when you're at your day job sometimes, and it takes a lot out of you. And I believe that I have the chops to handle it. I've got the commitment. I don't, again, I have an adult daughter. I can support Pasco 24/7, and I'm here for everybody. I can be as available as you need me to be and will continue to be so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm.
I will be on the soccer fields this Saturday coaching soccer. I am a member of the Franklin County Sheriff's Citizen Advisory Board. I am a chaplain down at the Union Gospel Mission where I'm there once a week. I'm a board member of this group, the Pasco Chamber of Commerce. I've been endorsed by Kate Lamson, Tiffany Smiley, Senator Schessler, Senator Torries, Representative Barnard, Representative Dye, most of the electeds at the county because they recognize me for my leadership and my servant's heart, and I hope and pray that you do too. Vote Charles Grimm for Pasco District Two. Thank you.
Thank you to our candidates. You can watch a rebroadcast of this forum online at the Pasco City Council, Pasco City Television, or on Charter Channel 191. This does conclude our forum. Please give our candidates a big round of applause. And I am now going to turn this forum over to Mr. Hastings.
Let's give Rebecca a round of applause for doing this.